The City Council, Wednesday, November 9th, to order, please stand for the implication and remain standing.
Dear God, Creator of all there is and ever shall be, we ask you to guide our city. We ask you to bless our country, our city, all the city workers and all the residents. We ask you for peace in our land. We ask you for peace in our universe. For this, we are thankful. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, call Ms. Shaw.
Yes, sir. Mayor Dale Nasson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Terrence Rowe.
Here.
Councilwoman Nancy Britton.
Here.
Councilwoman Jenny Sorrell.
Here.
Councilman William Dipmar.
Here.
City Attorney Jim Matthews.
Here.
And City Manager Vince Lupo.
Here.
Okay, we have, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're, announcement from staff. Mr. Fuzzell, Chris, Mr. McDonald, uh, Mr. Lupo, I don't know who has one.
Uh, yes, sir, council. Uh, most recently, among many issues that we've been attempting to look into and resolve, are issues concerning our water production. After some time and then after careful investigation, I've come to the conclusion that the water production and distribution in this community has been monumentally mishandled. And to that extent, we are, uh, we no longer have the two employees who are working in that department as employees of this city. We are working diligently to resolve those issues, and I feel extremely confident that not only will those issues be resolved, but they will reap extreme benefits for the community in general. To that end, this community was scheduled to receive a four percent water rate increase to begin on November 1st. It was part of a five-year plan submitted by the previous administration of four percent per year over a five-year period, equating to a 20% raise over time in your water rates. The last increment of that five-year plan was scheduled to go into effect on November 1st. I felt that that rate was not only unfair, unnecessary, and in my opinion, uh, beyond. Beyond, because you currently pay water rate probably close to second in highest in the state. I'm working diligently to attempt to reduce those rates. I'm asking that council, a request of the city attorney to prepare for our next council meeting. A resolution, I believe it's a resolution.
Yeah, but whatever it is, either way, but I think it's a resolution.
Okay. A resolution concurring in my actions to continue that four percent rate non-implementation. So, in essence, this council will be denying a four percent water rate increase to all of the users of our system.
So, I am looking for, now, I'll tell you, Vince and I meet every day, and he agonized over this, because we are trying to keep this budget straight, but we do not need to give the citizens another four percent, and I'm looking for a motion to...
Make a motion to request a resolution to forego the four percent increase.
Second.
I got a motion in a second. Uh, do I need, I guess I need to go to the public. Anybody want a four percent increase, please come up?
I don't see it.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Um, was that, was that on the agenda?
No, no, ma'am, this is just a report.
Okay, we're gonna go to the general public. Joel Smith.
Joel Smith, 7335 Candlelight Court. Mayor, city council members, new faces. Haven't been here for a little while, a lot of new faces. I want to personally thank the mayor for coming out and waiting down Candlelight Court to observe our flooding problem. There is actually pictures of him standing in the water, and, but I, I thank you for coming out and seeing that. With that same thing in mind, Mr. Lupo sent out a letter from relaying the information from the county. Uh, maybe make sure you're all aware of what's in that letter. One hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars for the residents on Candlelight Court that back up the walnut to have access to their back gate. One hundred and fifty-six thousand. I don't know where the county pulled that number up. I, I don't know, like I said, I don't know if anybody else is aware of that, but this came from Mr. Lupo. He was just relaying messages from the county.
That's twelve thousand for...
Well, we met with them, and I didn't hear that number either. So, that was after the meeting, they sent this?
No, no, sir.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead, Joel.
Okay. Um, okay.
I just didn't want you to...
They, they recited the ditch behind Candlelight Court. Now, the water runs down both ends. It now comes past my, Port Ritchie side of my house, undermining the dirt in my yard, washing it away. The other end runs out and runs into Lake Cox, which is part of our flooding problems. Both ends are in the jurisdiction of Port Ritchie. I'm not sure what can be done.
Okay.
But, like I said, it comes, both of them come in the jurisdiction of Port Ritchie, so there may be something we can do with that.
You, you go first. We're gonna hear two versions of the same meeting. We probably didn't hear the same.
Okay.
Sir, um, a last, a couple days ago, in fact, the city attorney, the mayor and I met with the county staff. We met with the county administrator. We went, met with Commissioner Mike Wells. We met with four additional members of the county administrator's staff. The point of that meeting was to discuss many issues surrounding Candlelight Court, including Orange Grove and including Walnut. Mr. Bruce Darling was there.
Okay.
Representing Candlelight Court and the area in particular. We discussed all of the issues relating to ingress and egress on Walnut, the relationship between the Port Ritchie residents on the right-hand side, as you're facing, and the county residents on the left-hand side with respect to the maintenance and upkeep of the road. We spoke about the condition of Orange Grove, having had some of, some of our, our citizens damage their vehicles with respect, in fact, I believe it may have been your wife.
It was.
In a pothole, where we, where we contacted the state, I'm sorry, the county, and we had our people go out and patch up those holes as quickly as possible, as soon as we were informed. At any rate, we spoke about Walnut, the paving of Walnut, the ingress, egress of Walnut. We spoke about Orange Grove, the paving and, and maintenance of Orange Grove, both of those roads being county roads. And then we spoke about the issues surrounding the, the potential flooding of Candlelight with respect to the, to the swales, I'm sorry, the, the drainage ditches, triangly placed, I would believe that, in that direction, on Walnut, where a large section of that water went down, wrapped around the 36-inch tree, and started to, to involve the, part of the problems with the neighbors. To that end, the mayor and, and County Commissioner Wells had a rather lengthy discussion with respect to who's, who's going to maintain it, who's gonna repair it, who's gonna begin to address the issues. Mr. Darling presented his case with respect to the costs involved in, which is what you were referring to.
Yes, sir.
The letter that I had passed on, that we had passed on, which was the county's estimates at what it would cost to put in box culverts down that section, so that the individuals on Walnut could have ingress and egress from the rear of their property. Now, that was thoroughly discussed. What eventually evolved from that was a joint effort from both the county and the city with respect to trying to ascertain exactly what the problems are with the roads, what can be done to address the issues, and what those costs may or may not be. Uh, the issue was further extended by, by, discussed by Mr. Darling with respect to his version of a much reduced cost per unit, per, per resident. Not only that, he had sent forth a proposal or a discussion with respect to who really used Walnut, what, county versus cities. And that eventually evolved a discussion between our mayor and County Commission, and then eventually the county administrator with respect to maintenance and who had the proper, who properly should be repairing those roads, fixing those roads, maintaining those roads. So, that's where we're at now. We have retained an engineer to take a look at, at the issues. I spoke to, the county is using its engineer and its staff to do the same thing. We will have a subsequent meeting and hope to come, to come to some resolution of the issue. We presented a timetable, which was unacceptable by, by the mayor, felt it was too long. We had further discussion, and we came up with a different timetable.
It seemed like we're, there's, something's being done.
Seven.
That never was being done before, so I thank you for that.
We're moving, but now, let me give you my version, and Jim will be the tiebreaker.
Okay. Sorry to take up so much of your time.
I do not know, and Jim hasn't read the 156,000. Where did that come from? Do you have that?
Uh, yes, sir. This is Mr. Lupo's letter. It's time 13.
I'm sure he sent it to me. I didn't read it, maybe.
Yeah. Um, well, it's quite lengthy, but it's, it's estimated 12,000 per, times 13 houses, 156,000, if all 13 of us...
That's, yes, sir, if, if I may.
It's an estimate, yeah.
It, it's part of the discussion that we had with, that Mr. Darling brought up with respect to the actual cost of placing the, the box culverts at Walnut, part of this discussion you had with them. But that is the accumu, that total number that he wrote was projected by the county, and was asked that we forward it to those residents, so they may be aware of what their individual expenses may be.
So, that was for 13 houses or 11?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Thirteen houses. Mr. Darling, to my recollection, said only six or eight.
Eight, eight.
Eight people even cared. And the original plan that, that I had thought that Mr. Mariano and I had talked about was to have the eight that wanted to do it would add their money to the eight or 10 on Walnut, reduce their assessment, which I think was taken over 20 years. But it was seven or eight thousand dollars for theirs, for those people.
I believe eight thousand.
Okay, eight thousand times eight. Now, I don't know how the hell they got, excuse me, to 156,000, and we're reducing...
Thirteen times 12.
Thirteen.
Twelve, 12,000 each, times 13 houses, if all 13 agreed to it.
But if, if only eight won it, do you want it?
Not at, not at, 12,000. Uh, I very rarely use it. I sold my trailer, sold my boat, so I really, at this point, I do not have anything in the backyard.
Okay, so...
But I would like to have access to it in the future.
Okay, so the 156,000 is our side?
That is a projection, as you will recall during the meeting, that they estimated it would cost 12,000 dollars per house, and they wanted us to distribute that letter as we did, so that they would, they, the citizens, would be aware of what the county was projecting if they decided to join in on that, and it, and it affected 13 residences. I'm, I'm sorry. It was eight, but, but they came up with, with 12.
Yeah, it was 12,000 dollars, but I believe there's only eight homes that abut Walnut on Candlelight Court.
Does that letter say 156,000?
No, I think he's estimating based on the number.
Yeah.
Interested property owners.
I don't know if the, the, over 50% of vote for it or agree to the assessment, what it would do. On Walnut, my understanding, there was only a few people that wanted Walnut paved, but the whole street had to pay for it.
That's the way the county does it, ma'am, Mr. Matthews, that way?
Well, I, I can assure you of this, okay? It's somewhat of a complicated legal issue, but...
Sure.
One thing you don't have to worry about is the city can't assess you for, for, for roads we don't own.
Correct.
Okay? And the county can't assess you since, you know, mandatorily for, 'cause you're not in the county. So, I guess what's happening now is the county is, their attorney is looking into clever ways of perhaps we could come to some sort of resolution. So, there's not gonna be a mandatory assessment, okay? That I can assure you of, okay?
Okay.
So, you'll know the figures in advance. You know, if you don't opt in now, can you opt in later? That I can't tell you, do you understand? My gut reaction is that'll be no.
Sure.
But what the numbers are gonna be is gonna be a, a function. They, they do theirs a little differently, do you understand what I mean? Like, if everybody doesn't opt in, how you pay, it may cost them this much and things like that. So, I'm not sure what their mathematics are, but right now, pretty much what we're working on is, and the county's being somewhat reasonable in their discussions, like, they're a slow animal, as most governments are, but, and I'm not patronizing the mayor, but, you know, we can only push them so much, we're not in a legal position to do otherwise, but we're looking for some way that we can determine value in whether they're gonna own it, and we'll have some sort of interlocal with them or vice versa. Their, their attorneys are looking at it, they're gonna talk to me and come back, and we should have some better figures. But there's the issue of, you know, see, they've assessed their people there, okay? So, their, their hands are bound by what they can and cannot do. They can't just give it to us for nothing, do you understand what I mean? They have to do it with certain financial, legal parameters, okay? So, we're working on those things right now, so, can't give you a better, more specific answer than that.
Sure. I'm just glad to see the city is doing something to do to...
Let me, I'm gonna give you the rest of my version, Jim and Vince. What I thought we ended up with was a volunteer thing.
Yeah, we're just working on that, right?
Which we would have to, you would have to volunteer in. Eight thousand, did that include the apron?
I don't think we took the numbers.
Right.
We were guessing around eight thousand plus the apron, is what I was hearing.
Plus the apron, no.
That was guessing, we're guessing.
Right. You got nothing about an, the apron cost, right?
Uh, I don't believe it is in here. It listed several things that, that the county was, was looking at.
It is in there.
Is it?
Yeah, I was gonna say, that 12,000, that reflects that, if I'm, I remember reviewing the letter, sir.
Eight plus four, yes, sir.
It was more than, than a one-step process.
Yes.
There were several steps that had to go, go in, and each, each process was gonna have an amount or value to go through.
Okay, was the county going to maintain the maintenance? That was, I thought, one of the major...
That was a part of the discussion.
That's part of the, that's part of the discussion, whether they're going to maintain the road or still own the road. They, they have some legal issues there.
Correct.
Okay, 'cause they've already assessed their people and already paid for it, so, you know, their hands are tied, but we're trying to figure out a way to do it. Matter of fact, it's kinda their ballpark on what they're...
It was our hope that we could go in with the, the county, the owners of the property on Walnut, go in with their assessment and split it with them, since it had already been assessed for the road. I didn't realize that there's so many other things involved to just put the road in, put our little driveway in, but like I said, I, I'm glad to see things are actually going forward. That wasn't me.
It was your wife, is it?
Who is it?
So, I, I thank you very much for, for your time.
Okay, I just wanna finish this off.
Okay.
They went to the attorney, figured out how we can do this. The other things we're talking about is Orange Grove Drive, which I would not even live there if I had to drive over that drive every day. And the questions, and Jim, you may answer, I hope you can answer this. Did the county agree to keep the maintenance of Orange Grove if we paid? He, he and I disagree, here's the topic.
Okay, where we were with that issue is, and we have legal issues here, is they're going to crunch some numbers.
Correct.
Okay? And what they're gonna do is they're gonna look at the costs for Orange Grove. Now, you gotta remember, this is council's approval, if you wanna do this, we didn't... To determine what it's gonna cost, and then they have a formula that since there's only one ingress and egress into Candlelight, that all the residents there get a benefit, okay, from fixing that road. They have a mathematical formula that it, they can assess people in the county for that kind of thing, okay, when it's like a dead end coming up to a road. So, they're gonna do that mathematical calculation and tell us what their value is to the Candlelight residents, okay? And there's a lot of it, so you divide it, you know, it'll be 20, 30% of the cost of the whole thing divided by all those people, and then this, and then whether we can legally do that, then the next question would be whether the city would wanna pay for that or not. That's what we're up to, we don't know what the number is.
Yes, sir.
And those numbers are being crunched, right?
Yes, sir.
So, we have the legal issue, whether we can do it, then we wanna know what the number is, then we're gonna bring it back to council, where the council wants to do it. Or maybe the, you, maybe the people in Candlelight wanna do it, but we're not up to that point yet.
And just to complicate things, from Washington to Candlelight, what is it, Washington, then the street that starts with a P?
Pulsar.
Pulsar.
Yes.
So, there's Washington, Pulsar, Walnut, then Candlelight.
Correct.
Then pass that, it appears to me that it's not that bad, and it's also not ours. Well, you don't have to go that way, do you?
No, sir. Uh, part of it is, but part of it is like Broadway on the, on the end. I believe part of it is in Port Ritchie, and part of it is not. Right in Broadway and in Candlelight, uh, in, um, Orange Grove, when it goes past Candlelight, the boundaries there are real difficult.
The entire Orange Grove is county road?
All but the end. Well, my side of my house is, is on Orange Grove. So, that would, that would be part of Port Ritchie, I believe.
I'm not sure where you look.
Yeah. Like I said, these, these are, these roads were started and stopped, so it's, it's, it's a little bit ambiguous as to where, what, where, what starts and what stops.
Yeah, well, the front of your house is in Candlelight, right?
Correct.
Well, the back of it could be a county road, that's the same issue on Walnut Street.
Sure, sure.
That's the same issue, all of, Orange Grove, is our understanding, is a county road.
It's a county road. I'm, I'm almost certain of that. My thought was, and I'm trying to do this for the council, if we pave from Washington to Candlelight, that's all of Port Ritchie's citizens live in Candlelight, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yes, sir.
So, why, she was talking about, well, if we paved the whole thing, then there's 27 units in Candlelight and 11 units past Candlelight that we would pave and go in together on that sort of split, which is roughly 33 to 66 for us. I personally think we should go from Washington to Candlelight, be done with it, and if they will keep the maintenance, then I, I would be for doing that and let them worry about everything past Candlelight. And, and Vince and I disagreed about whether she, she, I thought she told me they would keep the maintenance, which is something we're a little bit worried about because of flooding. If we can do that, that paving, would that be copacetic with you? Or do you wanna look down the rest of it?
In my opinion...
Uh-huh.
There's only one stretch that need, that absolutely has to be done, that's from Pulsar to Walnut.
Okay.
Uh, from Washington to Pulsar is, is fairly even, with a few potholes. Past Candlelight is, is, goes off into a dirt road.
That's why she was...
But the part right there between Pulsar and, and Walnut is really where all the damage is.
Okay.
It, you could limit it to 200, 300 feet, if it had to be done. Why they did, when they paved Walnut with all the equipment, why they didn't go around the corner and pave the rest, uh, you know, they, they can only do what's in their contract, of course. But it, they were sitting right there, parking on the side of my house with all the equipment to pave the road, when they did Walnut. Well, like I said, it is, that one stretch is what...
Oh, go ahead.
That one stretch between Pulsar and Walnut is what is really damaged.
That's a short stretch, if I remember.
It really is. Uh, the, the rest of it, it really, in my opinion, does not need to be paved.
Okay, Nancy, yeah.
Now, whether or not you can get a contractor to come out and just do that one half a block area, you know, that's a different, different problem.
I have two points. One, I heard that, I heard, that they're, just hearsay, that they're gonna be doing Washington Street.
Yes.
If that's the case, then the argument for Orange Grove can come back up again, 'cause it needs to be done the right way. And two, I thought that, Councilwoman Britton, could you see if you're...
I thought that when you guys were working out the steal, I really expected that you would just split what, the assessment fee, like you had said, with the other people on Walnut that are in the city of Newport Ritchie. But now, you're telling me that they're adding more fees 'cause they wanna do an apron, they wanna do all these other things.
Yeah, well, the issue, the...
Can I read that?
The issue is that there is a, a swell drainage ditch along the one side of Walnut that abuts the rear of these properties. And the county is refusing to allow egress from those properties onto Walnut, because it would damage that drainage swell.
Swell, what?
So, they're proposing that if, if the residents on Walnut wish to have that egress, they must install a box culvert or a culvert and properly cover that and put an apron on. And that is how they derive the...
12,000.
12,000 dollars per unit. So, that's how that evolved. It very...
Okay, so basically, they're, all they wanna do literally is put a three or four-foot section of concrete by a six-foot section of concrete and charge them 12 grand? I mean, literally, isn't it?
It's, it's more like eight foot.
Well, can I, can I...
Sure.
Please.
I can answer that question.
And this is important.
The county...
Put this on, the county does not repair roads. They do it by assessment. Here in Port Ritchie, we don't, we repair roads. We have the ability to assess, but we repair roads. The county doesn't. So, they have a law regarding their assessment, and it's a state law, it's also a county ordinance, that Walnut Street, if they wanna fix Walnut Street, there's a mathematical formula for those that have frontage on Walnut Street. They assessed for 20 years those people in the county, it's not Newport Ritchie, it's the county.
Right.
They assess them pursuant to the formula. They also have a rule that there's no access out the back of the house, okay, as opposed to the front, but they can assess legally the Candlelight residents, whether they want it to voluntarily or not, okay? So, these...
Access?
They were talking about Walnut Street. There's county residents and there's Candlelight residents. The county cannot assess Port Ritchie residents, they're not allowed to. So, the mathematical formula that they charge their people is frozen, they have to charge that much. If they're going to in any way allow the Candlelight residents to come into that assessment, they have to do so mathematically. The 12,000 dollars, the, the...
The twelve thousand dollars, the lion's share of that is their mathematical assessment as if they lived on a county road, to be fair to those that have already paid, so that's about eight of the twelve. They're guessing at the other four thousand to be the cost of going over the swell.
So the rest of the money goes in their pocket?
The other eight thousand dollars goes in the county pocket to reimburse them for the hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars they spent in paving the road. The answer to your question.
But they assess their own residents for that, so they've already gotten paid, so now they're gonna get paid more?
They only assess a certain percentage, they may spend more than they assess. Do you understand what I mean? And that's what happens when it's, when a county resident is only on one side of the street, they only pay like a half, do you understand what I mean? Because there is nobody on the other side. With regard to your comment before, they went up the road, that's kind of not how it works. I understand it's another, go around the corner and fix that road?
Sure.
That's not how it works. I mean, the county, as logical as that may sound, you'd think that, well, can't you just slap something over there? That's not how they work, so it wasn't that.
It's contract basis.
Yeah, so I hope that sheds some light on that.
To me, it looks like the county missed one part of this, is that they've already assessed eight people.
Right.
We were assuming they would take that assessment, add you, and divide by a larger number of people, which they have not done.
That's what we had proposed and hoped for.
That is what we are heading at. I'm assuming they'll do it, but I think that, I mean, four thousand dollars for an apron is, I promise you, I will start Masses Apron Company and do it less than that.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you very much.
That should be interesting.
I can build an apron. I have Tom Brown. Might as well keep this in the family.
Tom Brown. Thomas Brown, seventy-four thirty-six Candlelight Court. City Manager Lupo, thank you for your opinion, based on opinions by past colleagues and two city attorneys, that Lake Cox is a man-made body of water. Opinions are not fact. I am still waiting for a copy of the required Army Corps of Engineers permit to dig the lake. I have had conversations with Jessica Hendricks and Trevor Fagan of the Southwest Florida Water Management District. Now I know why the city will not admit that Lake Cox is a naturally formed body of water. SWIFTMUD, the Environmental Protection Agency, and/or the Florida Department of Fish and Wildlife will not allow a subdivision to drain its toxic storm water from the streets into a natural lake. Mr. Fagan, an environmental scientist, came out to Lake Cox and tested the water quality. His written report contains the statements. The algae in the sample appeared alive and healthy, and toxin potential, yes. He explained to me that the lake water was toxic due to automotive antifreeze, motor oil, and phosphate from lawn fertilizers. There is no doubt that the fishing in this lake was great thirty years ago and is a waste of time today. I have witnessed the disappearance of otters, alligators, frogs, mallard ducks, and fish from Lake Cox over the past thirty years. This is why the chemist from SWIFTMUD provided me with the phone number of the Fish and Wildlife Commission's Fish Kill Hotline. If the aforementioned departments were to be informed that the city approved the storm water runoff into Lake Cox, the city would be required to find a way to get the runoff from the two city streets into an approved storm water runoff system. For financial reasons, the city will not admit that Lake Cox is a naturally formed body of water. Considering all of the evidence that I have proving that Lake Cox is natural and the total lack of hard evidence that the city has proving that the lake was dug, I am sure that I could convince SWIFTMUD, Fish and Wildlife, and the EPA that Lake Cox formed naturally prior to nineteen seventy-nine. I would not like to see Candlelight Court and Lantern Lane torn up to put the new pipes in. On a different subject. I am currently trying to get the city to remove a section of fence that the city permitted a resident to erect on property that the resident does not own.
Tom, you're running out of, you're out of time, sir.
The last person wasn't timed at all.
Well, that's because we were discussing your subdivision. Do you have much left?
About forty seconds, two, three sentences.
Counsel? Go.
Here we are with an erection problem. Several city ordinances were violated in the permitting, erecting, and inspecting of this part of the fence. At this time, the city is not ready to own up to its mistakes and take corrective action. Please do something about the fences at seventy-four forty-seven Candlelight Court that are on a recorded easement and not on the resident's property. Thank you.
I'm going, I just need to think. Mr. Brown, what would you consider the authority that would tell us whether this was man-made or natural?
A letter, a permit.
Just let me get this over with, we're gonna do this every week.
Have him come up to the mic, he's gonna speak. Have him come up to the mic.
Please come up to the mic, and I'm just gonna do this quickly because we've.
You can't dig a lake or a retention pond without a permit letter from the Army Corps of Engineers.
Have you asked for that?
I've requested it of the city, and I'm still waiting.
Why don't you have requested of the Army Corps?
No, I haven't.
We'll do that.
All right.
If they say yes, then we'll be all in.
It's public record.
Is it not? Jim?
I presume everything at the Army Corps, whether that resolves the issue or not, I don't know, but.
Would it be public record if they dug that pond, lake, whatever it is?
Unless Clay Shay handled it.
Clay, and I'm sure he did. Do you think it would be a public record?
I think Army Corps of Engineer records are public, that's all I can tell you.
Please ask the Army Corps for that, for that. Thank, and then we'll, if we need to, we'll deal with it. Okay, Reverend Lloyd?
Leonard Lord, I pastorate eight one one four Leo Kid Avenue. Hi, Mayor, Council, everybody. I'm glad the election's over, I'm glad our prayers were heard, and I hope for our nation to get back on track. But anyway, just want to remind those that want to be a part of it that our Cure Fest is going to be Saturday. We choose to meet at Waterfront Park, therefore, if we've got extra people beyond projects, we can do some work there, we've done times before. So just want to invite any of you that would like to come out, be there at eight-thirty to get ready to go. And then around twelve-thirty or one, we'll come back and eat and go over the work that's been done. Also with that, we knew Pass goes last Saturday. There are really a lot of networking going on for our community, particularly dealing with the drugs, the rehab, and all the children because of the drugs, as well as human trafficking also. I was thankful to be a part of that, so that's going on good. So ever how you see, you can network in that, in the restoration. Also, this Sunday at the church after service, we're having our community Thanksgiving dinner. You're all welcome. And then the fourteenth, on a Wednesday evening at six, we'll have our Christmas annual dinner, and you're all invited. Appreciate Will and his wife coming out and others to the fish fry. Thank you all so much, and just remember, it's how much we help one another and how much we bless one another that makes our city great. So we just want to be there for you. Lord bless you, remember, eight-thirty Saturday morning, if you want to come out and join us at Waterfront Park, anything that you can help us with. So Chris will be in touch, thank all of you. Lord bless you, thank you.
All right, we're at the consensus agenda, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second? Motion to approve, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're now at second and final reading, Mr. Matthews is gonna take that.
This is the second and final reading of ordinance number one six six five three. This is nothing more than coming into compliance with the county fine code. An ordinance of the Code of the City of Port Ritchie, Florida, mending Chapter Two Administration, Article Five, Code Enforcement, Section two dash two nine nine, violations and penalties, and providing for severability and an effective date, looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, that's sixteen dash six five three.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion, the second, I doubt the public cares, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I know the gentleman that is here. We're on selecting, selection of independent financial auditing. The staff has recommended a company, and maybe you would like to speak or no? Well, you've been here all day, so.
Yes, okay, I've heard a lot of interesting things. I'm Richard Powell of Powell &amp; Jones. I'm very honored that out of the four proposals received, the staff has ranked our firm the highest. It is also, I was very pleased that through our four years of working with the city and staff and contractual accountant, and that we found we can reduce our fees into the future, and that's a reflection on the quality of the city's records and practices. And so we'd be pleased and honored to have you accept our proposal for audit services.
Well, in my opinion, you've done a great job in the past, so I would motion to approve.
Second?
Motion to approve, second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
That was easy.
I appreciate it, thank you.
You're it, I figured you would. Okay, Mr. Washington, do you have the doc permit agenda item? Or do you want us to take them here?
I can take it. It's simply a permit request that been reviewed by the building department, and the building department concurs, and it's presented to the council for your concurrence. The building department recommends approval of this request.
Motion to approve. Second?
Any questions, any thoughts? Okay, any, I let the public, nothing? I have a motion, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're moving along a little, on boards and committees. I think nobody probably came up with anything, so I'd like to nominate Dean Nelson for Planning and Zoning Board.
He's already on a, he's already on a board, sir.
He is on a board?
Yes, sir.
What is he on?
He's on the Planning and Zoning Board.
Which is what we're trying to fill.
Or is he the Board of Adjustments? Yeah, he's already on a board, he can't serve on two.
We're trying to fill Planning and Zoning, he can't be on that one, so which other one is he on?
He's on the Board of Adjustment, I apologize, he's on the Board of Adjustment.
Anyone else have a thought? Pete, would you consider this, you know, you're on one, too?
Claudia, are you interested?
Sure.
There you go.
Claudia Smith.
Would you accept? Planning and zoning?
Yes.
I.
I nominate Claudia.
Nominate Claudia.
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I have a nomination in a second.
Smith.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're it.
Congratulations, Ms. Smith.
Yeah, would you like to make an acceptance speech? Okay, we're at.
There's one issue that.
Claudia, come up and speak now.
One issue, the city attorney will bring it up.
Okay, please do.
Mayor?
Yes?
If I could, one brief thing. I would, as a city attorney, I cannot, as a city attorney, I cannot prepare any ordinances without council's permission. I'd like to bring a draft of an ordinance back, and long and the short of the matter is this. The, we found this out through a request from a title company the other day for a relatively large amount of money on an outstanding water bill here, and I've been chatting with the city clerk, and I'd like to thank her for this idea. But after doing some research, I'm recommending this. So pretty much what happens is, and just give me a little latitude here, is once or twice a day, correct me if I'm wrong, Tammy, at least, right? We get lien search requests is what it's called now. When we file liens for different things, like demolition orders and things like this, they're picked up at the county records. But the real reason for a lien search request by a title company is someone's selling a house, they want to know if there's an outstanding water bill. So two or three times a day, we get these requests, and the city clerk has to stop everything she's doing and respond to these requests, okay? So I did a little homework and checked with some title companies during the week, and it looks to me like at least half the cities in the state, from what I could see just easily, and I know from speaking with a bunch of title companies, everybody charges for this. Newport Ritchie charges for it, they charge fifty dollars, seventy-five dollars for an expedited thing. So in other words, they call, well, we gotta have it, settlement's tomorrow morning, Tammy has to stop everything she's doing, and does this, does this two or three times a day, okay? And some cities charge two hundred dollars, some charge a hundred dollars. Some charge fifty, seventy-five, so we can't do it without an ordinance. So I'd like to prepare that, and if, say we charge fifty dollars, twice a day is a hundred dollars, that's two thousand dollars, twenty-four, two thousand dollars a month, twenty-four thousand dollars a year, it's routine, you know, the title companies expect to do it. And so it's half a police car every year, so can I bring back a draft? We'll take a look at it, explain it further? Yes? That's me, I got a loose connection.
Yes. I think mine's loose.
Go ahead.
You are his loose connect.
So anyway, back at the store. My question is, how are we gonna, how are we gonna accept payment? Because if I'm a title company and I need something rushed, and you can't take my credit cards, et cetera, that needs to be in place.
Very good, very good question. Yes, I discussed this with a couple of title companies already. Generally, what happens is they make a telephone or a fax request or email request, and what happens is, quote unquote, from the two title companies I spoke with last week, yeah, and the city generally wants to take our credit card on the phone if they want it right away. So we'll have to set that up to be done, and that's kind of why I wanted to bring it back as a draft. But for two thousand dollars a month, I'm sure we could make it happen in some fashion. Generally, expedited will charge seventy-five or a hundred dollars. Sometimes they want it, it's gotta be by tomorrow, so yes, we'd have to have some way of them paying by phone, that's correct.
And we have to discuss whether or not we're gonna charge them the fee that it cost us to.
Yes, those are all the things, those details I want to bring back, we'll charge them that fee, too. I was thinking around fifty dollars, but, you know, I'll go look at some other cities and bring back a list.
Are we not allowed to make money?
Well, it's an administrative charge, that's, since it's an administrative charge is why I need to do it by ordinance. Are we making money? She's running around two, three times a day, spending an hour or two doing this for nothing, everybody charges for it.
I absolutely agree.
I just want, just, I just need a consensus that this, you know, I'm the city attorney, I can't be bringing ordinances here without your approval.
Anyone opposed?
There you go, that's all I'm looking for.
I think we need a motion.
I need a motion, just somebody shaking their heads enough. Otherwise, I'd be driving policy if I did. And thank you for bringing that up, Tammy.
Okay, old business, my store.
We have been very good about taking care of business.
They are doing it.
I do want to ask about the Clark Moody Road that Mr. Montana asked about, have we got an answer for him?
Clark Moody, that's something I'm going to have to check into.
Okay, that was an old email.
That was the industrial.
Yes.
Yeah, well, I just recently took over for...
Can you look into that for Super Reason?
Yeah, I'd love to do that for you.
Well, thank you.
I know tomorrow I'm going to be going around with FEMA, and that's one of the roads we're going to be going down as well.
Awesome. Okay.
Chris, may I ask you something?
Sure.
When, when these two stars got elected, one of Will's and my thoughts that we really needed to do was have all the swales cut, remember? And we were told they, they had been done, and we bought a 78-year, $90,000 machine, and they are not done.
Yeah, well, we started on it aggressively, and Aaron added some on GIS, if I remember right, the streets that we had completed. And right now, we've kind of been overwhelmed with some issues and the extra work, we're kind of short-staffed.
I understand you have the problems now.
Is that on the south side, Chris? Yes, sir. Okay, because I spoke to a citizen actually today, and actually mentioned that he had seen the machine. Yeah, we were down there. Yeah, so. We ran around the complete south side.
Yeah, if you could put that on some sort of calendar. Pat told me it was all done, and I told somebody over the phone, and they told me, oh, it's crazy.
Yeah, we're not completely finished. Well, like I said, Aaron has the list of the streets that we have completed, and we are going to start that back process up soon.
Part, part of the issue, and council's going to have to please understand, is that we did have a awful backlog of work for our Public Works Department, because all, a lot of our efforts were slanted towards recovery from the water damage that we had with Hermine. And we've gone to the feds to try and get some funds back into our system, but there were substantial delays on many of the different public works projects due to our attempting to resolve some of the issues with our citizens, the quick removal of some of the debris that was left out there. In fact, we, we removed those, the debris from the hurricane damage quicker than anybody, including the county or our neighbors. So that's part of the reason why we're slightly behind on some of the roadwork.
Okay, well, we're almost dancing up...
Are we at the end of the meeting?
It's almost. I just wanted to thank Jim and Mr. Lupo, 4% water decrease. Jim did a great job on the budget, and I think the city is ready for launch. I want to thank the new members of the council, the old members, and y'all just keep dragging me along. Please.
Two things. One, I'd like to wish all the veterans in our city a happy Veterans Day, and thank you for your service. And also, I'd like to talk to the chief about, are we going to get on that truck this Christmas?
Of course.
Okay. So, we need to make plans, a date.
Nancy?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
We have been talking about that. We have been talking about that internally. We plan to have the Christmas in the Waterfront Park, as we have in the past, and have the fire truck go around the city with Santa on it. I heard the mayor volunteered to serve as one of the Santas.
I heard there was an elf that was going to be...
Yeah, I haven't heard that, Jim.
I heard that.
First time I'm hearing about it. First I'm hearing of that. We, we have the event planned for December, Friday, December 16th, at 7 o'clock PM.
Friday, December 16th?
At 7 o'clock PM.
Okay.
And we'll have toys and candy and police and fire.
Trucking down one lane street. I love that fire truck stuff.
I'd also like to welcome back Captain Barcello. Nice to have you back with us again.
Thank you.
Pillar, thank you. Any other comments, thoughts?
Just a short one. I thank you again for the water situation that you're on, and for me, it's very frustrating. For years, I've been up here talking about our water situation, and I never got any, any help or any results. And in spite of my questions, and in spite of all the times I pointed out on a consent agenda, all the money that was pouring out of our coffers into Newport Ritchie, nothing was done. And now it is being done. Thank you for that. I hope we're documenting everything that is a foul there, because I want to have a full consensus on what was going on in that water department. Some of this, well, I'll remove myself from counsel for a moment, and just go back to the fact that I'm a citizen here, as you all are, and we were all over pain for water. I don't have any patience for it. I think it's a travesty, I think it's beyond anything I had patience with. We're a community, we're supposed to work together. And I hope the councils in the future will look to work together. When someone brings a problem to the table, we should all work together on it and make sure it's on the table, looked at, and addressed, not just swept aside because we trust someone. There's a lesson here, a big lesson, and a lot of money, a lot of your money that went to waste.
And that is, you are lonely here. As we go, you'll see how the money, how much less money is coming out of your pockets. I agree with Terry. This city, first time since I moved here, is not fighting north, south, east, west. Let's keep it, let's keep it holiday season and address all the problems, address them fairly, the playing, the table is level, and with that, I would accept.
Real quick?
Yes.
Just want to make a point. I will tell you, 20 years ago, I came to the city of Port Ritchie, and I told them we weren't paying enough for water. It's a commodity that we need to really be resourceful with, and so anyway, that's my point. And we'll see, well, let's see how much money we save. I hope we do.
Water is the new oil, I can tell you. Okay?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.